At the June 2nd, 2021 Policy Committee meeting, we have all four board members here, Nathaniel Shu and Jackson Weinberg, the student representatives to this committee. And I think we are ready to roll. So the first item on the agenda is generally staff updates. I don't believe we have any today. Is that right?
We don't have any updates.
So we'll just launch into the policies. And the first policy on the agenda is a climate crisis response policy. And we have some new language that's before the committee. And we have some information about staff responses to the language that has been in the staff responses to the feasibility of some of the elements of the existing language. So I think Aaron is going to take this one. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, take it away. Thank you.
Thanks Rita. Hi, everyone. Let me just get my screen shared.
Then I should probably also, sorry to interrupt. I should probably also say, since Scott is sort of the lead committee person on this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand off the metaphorical gavel to him to lead the discussion here.
You know what that means. Let's just vote on what we got and forward it and move on to the next agenda item. Aaron, take it away.
Yeah, no, that's not.
Okay, can you all see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So I basically met with these four departments to kind of gather feedback on all the items that are going to affect the way that these departments operate. So just, this is kind of some general feedback that we got from Nutrition Services, Purchasing, Transportation, and Grounds. And I'm gonna warn you guys right now, these slides are very wordy, but I did it by design because I want you to be able to go back and reference them and be able to read it without remembering everything that I'm telling you right now. So just, I'm not gonna read all these words verbatim, but just some general themes from both Purchasing and Nutrition where that the language is pretty narrow in this policy and they would prefer to have something a little bit more high level so that we can include those details in the AD or in the subsequent implementation plans that come out of this policy. And we'll get more into those specifics later. And for Transportation and Grounds, both of them were very supportive of this work, but they're a little bit worried about staff capacity and funding. So I'll talk more about that as it relates to both those two departments. But for Grounds, I mean, I think some of you might know that we have less than 10 people in our Grounds Department to maintain across the entire district. So they're just a little bit worried about, okay, we need to hire more staff or do we need to get more funds for contracts in order to keep up with the increased green infrastructure? So the way that I set this up, if you want to follow along with the policy, I'm gonna go down in order. I'm not gonna talk about every line item, but I am gonna point out the ones that have comments. So starting with Goal 1.1, number eight, the green text is what was written in the previous draft. The white text in the middle is the summary of the comments that we received from these departments. And then the blue text, if there is a revision, is the proposed revised statement for that goal, if that makes sense. So Nutrition Services requested that this be a little bit more high level. They want to take out the requirement for milk dispensers. There's a lot of barriers to that that have been researched over the years. So they prefer not to be required to install milk dispensers. And then they also want to change this to only apply to elementary and middle school since they have a closed campus for lunch. If we get into a situation where we have reusable utensils and trays in a high school, then we have them all over the campus. Sometimes they're being taken off campus. How do we keep track of them? And at some point, we start losing reusables, which is, you know, has an even bigger environmental impact than throwing away plastic utensils. So there is that issue as well. And another statistic that they shared with us is that high schools, in addition to being open campus, only about 25% of high school students are buying school lunch. Everyone else is either packing a lunch or going off campus to eat elsewhere. So it would be a bigger impact if we focus these efforts on elementary and middle schools.
I have a question, Aaron, here. This is Director Lowry. What about, is there, did we talk with them? And maybe it's somewhere else about those plastics. I know that there's corn-based stuff. There's other options. We just had a group of students give us some public testimony about the plastic in their lunches.
Right.
Is that, is that part of the conversation with Nutrition Services?
Yeah, this has been a conversation for years that we've worked with Nutrition Services on. The problem with those products is that we have to throw them away anyway. They wouldn't get composted because the commercial food waste program is not compost like the residential program is in the city. So there's just, there's just other barriers that are out of our control like that. So we could use those, but they're significantly more expensive and they wouldn't be getting composted. So there's that barrier. But in general, they, you know, they said this is doable, but it just needs to be, you know, changed a little bit. They want it to be a little bit more broad. And, you know, we added the language in here at the bottom of being at closed campuses only. So moving down to Goal 1.2, number two, establish standardized systems for waste prevention, reuse, recycling, and food waste in all campuses. So we have all of these already happening, but they are not necessarily standardized. So we're in support of it. We will just need some funding to purchase signage and bins because it would be great to get to a point where we have uniform signage and bins across all of our sites. Whereas now, you know, we have, we're picking up all these waste streams. We have food waste. We have recycling. We have garbage. But we, on the interior of our buildings, we have just a hodgepodge of different bins that may or may not be the same across different sites. So we're supportive of this, but just pointing out that we need more funding to purchase those bins and signage. Goal 1.3, number one. So this one has to do with stormwater, rain gardens, bioswells, DPave projects, eco roofs, so all of which we have at certain sites. But this, you know, is saying to maximize those and make them more of a priority, which is something that we've been working towards. But just some comments from Grounds. We do have a bioswell maintenance contract right now, but we would need to add a significant amount of funding to those over the years as we build out this infrastructure. And just, you know, basically hiring contractors to help us maintain these after they're installed. Their issue wasn't so much about having them or building them. It's more about how do we maintain them? And if we can't do it in-house, we have to hire contractors to help us out there. Goal 1.3, number two, phase out gas-powered equipment used for grounds maintenance. This is pretty feasible, but just some limitations that were pointed out from our grounds department. The batteries only last about 90 minutes when they're going at full power, whereas they can run a gas leaf blower all day long without having to refill it. So we need to make sure that we have backup batteries that can be charged. Another thing they pointed out is that they're significantly heavier with the lithium ion batteries in them. So, you know, we might, we may be limited in that capacity, but I would assume that the technology would get better over the years. They're also three times the cost, so another just funding issue to point out there.
Aaron, are these the same loudness?
No, they're much quieter. Yeah. So that's another benefit.
That's the same.
Yeah.
Just want to point out there are private sector maintenance folks who have found recharging isn't a big deal. Some of them actually have solar panels on the top of their roofs as part of the recharging system. And they just swap them out. So they have, they have an extra battery and they just, when it's used up, they swap it out.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if we can get two batteries per leaf blower, that should, you know, that should be good enough.
Aaron, I'm noticing, well, a lot of these, it's not that there's not a lack of capability to do it or a willingness, but rather there's just a fiscal impact. Do we have the sort of, but the annual costs would be on some of these things over multiple? I noticed there's on the phone, just to get a good sense of like ballpark what the costs of these are because it sounds like they're all doable. It's just a matter of, you know.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the operating cost, if we're using this as an example, you know, electricity is cheaper than gasoline, so that's gonna save us on operational costs there. But it's more about the upfront cost of replacing every leaf blower that we have. So if we had some sort of phase-out plan that comes out of the AD, maybe.
Yeah, and this is, again, this is a multi-decade, at least two-decade transition. Again, focusing on the biggest bang for the buck in terms of carbon imprint. So, yeah, that's understood that this isn't take care of this tomorrow.
Right.
Kind of a policy.
Any more questions on the leaf blower? Okay. Moving on to Goal 1.3, number three, decrease water consumption and phase out the use of pesticides and herbicides. So currently, as part of our pest management program, we only use pesticides and herbicides that are on the EPA-approved list. It doesn't necessarily mean that they, you know, are completely non-toxic. They're just on the EPA-approved list. So if we were to phase out absolutely all pesticides and herbicides, it's feasible. But then again, you know, we get back to the labor and funding issues. So if we're not using any kind of chemicals, then, you know, you need more labor to pull weeds and maintain all of the landscaping across the district.
Aaron, how does this interact? I'd make this a question here or somebody else, or I could look it up. How does this interact with our, we have a policy on pesticides. It was written, I think, in 2003. It was the year that we kind of embraced dandelions and everything else. And we, there was a massive reduction in the use of pesticides and herbicides. And there was a policy that was drafted. That's a curious, is this consistent? Is?
Yeah, so we're currently following up the integrated pest management policy, which calls out, you know, using EPA-approved, I'm pretty sure it calls out using EPA-approved pesticides and herbicides. So we are following that. But this draft of, the most previous, recent draft of this policy is calling to phase out all pesticides and herbicides. So that would be the difference. And just anecdotally, we get, you know, some complaints from community about using pesticides. We get other complaints from the community about your, you know, the school lawn or the landscaping does not look good and you need to clean it up. And, you know, so it's kind of, you know, we have that on both sides. And, you know, it's definitely doable. But, you know, part of, part of how we are maintaining that right now is using pesticides, once again, on the EPA-approved list. But with the small grounds crew that we have, it's pretty much their only option. Goal 1.3, number four, increase shade trees, pollinator habitats, DPave projects with highest priority and low canopy neighborhoods. So kind of the same answer here, you know, more, more staff or more funds to contract out for this work. Just some data that they threw out. As PPS grounds currently waters 120 newly planted trees. So that's about our capacity there. So we would need a larger crew or contractors to help out. I also think that it might not be a great idea for pollinator habitats to be on school campus just for attracting bees. So we recommended to take that part out. So we're good with the rest of the, rest of this. But I don't know if we want a situation where we have swarms of bees on campuses.
I think there was, I think there was a movie about that once. It ended badly.
Yeah. I'm allergic to bees too, so I'm, you know.
There, there we go.
Okay, Goal 1.4, number two, transition PPS and contracted vehicle fleet to electric or low emissions renewable fuels based on vehicle lifecycle evaluation of carbon impact. So transportation is very much on board here. We, we actually are in the purchase of, in the process of purchasing our first electric bus with the help of PGE's grant, which will be awesome. So, you know, we, we're, another cost issue here. They're three to four times more expensive. So you can see the numbers here of what, you know, an EV bus costs compared to a standard diesel or propane bus. So significant cost implication. The PGE grant does fund the incremental cost. So, so the district is fronting the $75,000 we would pay for a normal bus. And the grant covers the incremental cost. Now, PGE is doing another grant and we're applying for that. So, you know, we might get a second bus. But long-term, we're going to have to, you know, front all the money here. And so that was just brought up of how do we come up with that extra budget for transportation to afford these buses?
Aaron, I want to add, at our recent board meeting, we approved the contractor, the new transportation contractor. And our board had interest in contacting the contractor and, because they're about to buy a fleet of buses. And we're looking at the cost and what's possible in terms of buying electric buses for this new contractor. So I just wanted to kind of update that because, Aaron, I believe you weren't in the board meeting, which I would not expect you to be. But Dan Young is well aware and as are Terry and Brandon from Transportation. So I just wanted to make sure you were on board, you have that additional information and then it's also more transparent in this policy process as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Claire.
Can I ask, Claire, I'm sorry, can I ask Claire a question about that? So, did I understand correctly that we're, that the district is contemplating buying electric buses for a private contractor?
No, the private contractor would buy them, but we'd, we have, it would change our contract with them. So we'd have to pay them a different rate for buses because the cost of go. It's an alternate to the contract. It's, you know, it's a change order to the contract. So we'd have to pay additional funding for that. And then we also get the reimbursement and the depreciation of buses back from the state. So all of it, you know, works through. But it's, yes, we have, we put out an RFP that did not include electric buses. So now we're asking for them to include them. And we have to see what's possible to get them in time. There's also a long lead time, so we're working with them for an alternate contract for that component.
So Claire, just.
This is, look, it's getting a little bit, it's getting a lot in weeds. But the maintenance and the long-term costs of electric vehicles is substantially lower. So I would hope that when we negotiate with them, I mean, I understand there's a significant upfront cost, but it's amortized over time. And I hope, I would hope that our contract with them would reflect that.
Thank you for the additional thoughts.
Claire, I was gonna ask, in terms of the state reimbursement, is it, are we reimbursed like at a, you're using gas-powered buses? Or if you had a higher cost because we had electric buses, that they would reimburse us at the same percentage, but would be a higher, higher rate? Or how, how does that work? Or is it just like we're stuck on the, the gas reimbursement?
No, we're not stuck on the gas reimbursement rate. But it is different when it's coming, when I'm thinking about it. If it's coming as a service through a contractor, it's not a depreciation. But I need to confirm, I really need to confirm with ODE and the rules. But what I know is there, it's a dollar amount and it's not specifically for a prescribed vehicle. But there is, when we buy the vehicles, we get reimbursed over 10 years for our buses, for instance.
So just, and maybe this is like a longer-term strategy, but maybe the, the part of the advocacy is at the state level for them to reimburse and incentivize districts to move to electric and help with the greater share of the costs?
Yeah, I think, and there was, yeah, well, the federal government specifically called out. And I really think that's, that's, that's the proper level. But I'm not adverse to including state and that's in the blue language as well.
Yeah, I think we should include state, add the state to this.
And Aaron, this, this is a big part of our current footprint. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's likely the second largest behind our building energy use.
So this is, this is much more looming, I think, than some of the other things in the policy, both in terms of our fleet and in terms of the student contractor fleet. So, yeah, I think in terms of our legislative agenda, this, this should start to, start to be at the top or close to it.
Yeah, it just seems like the size of the prize here. We could, especially districts have to do it. It's like if they're incentivizing districts using, you know, gas-powered or diesel, you know, buses, if we could flip that, that would, I say, the size of the prize is pretty substantial. And not a bad thing to be doing to incentivize statewide anyway.
Yeah, exactly. And this is where being the largest district in the state, where we can really play a leadership role. Okay, what's next up?
Okay. Still on 1.4, number three, addressing the no idle policy, both for fleet vehicles, buses, and then also for family cars. So Transportation already has a policy in place where they, if they're going to be idling for more than five minutes, that they need to turn their engine off. So that's in place already. There is no policy or awareness or education around family or parents idling in their cars. So when meeting with Terry, she basically said that they would, they could help fund signage and, you know, put together some educational materials or videos to kind of start that campaign. So Scott, when you rewrote this one, you know, you changed it to educate families to lower idling by family cars in schools, which makes sense. I mean, we could keep, you know, some language around buses having a no idle policy just to have it in here, but it, it is already in place.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. We should, even if we're doing something, putting into policy to ensure that we maintain that is a good idea.
Moving on to 1.5, number two, purchase products based on long-term environmental and operating costs and include ecological and resulting social costs in purchasing decisions. So this one is a little bit tough because we talked about with purchasing, how do we, how do we basically keep track of this in a decentralized purchasing model? So, you know, we, departments and schools are making purchases every day, all the time on small items such as markers and, you know, reams of paper and things like that. So that's not something that's monitored at the, at the centralized purchasing department level. We did discuss making this, make part of the scoring category in like a formal solicitation, similar to how we have the business equity goals. So that would, that would include services at the district level that are over $150,000. So I know Emily's on the call. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that. But we basically were just discussing about how, how can we restructure this to make it so that it's only for larger centralized purchases?
Right. And I'll just add that most of our, well, we have so many different kinds of RFPs. And it's, and it's hard to say how you would operationalize, operationalize these across all the different kinds of formal solicitations where there are scoring categories. I can see it most in our solicitations for things like Transportation Services and Nutrition Services products, again, which are already separately addressed in this policy. But as for all the purchasing that's done by schools and departments at their own discretion throughout the year, I just, I'm not sure how we'd operationally.
Okay, so we have, based on staff's feedback, we have some new language. That's, I mean, the other thing that came up was around staff are part of a number of large regional or national cooperatives purchasing agreements that save us money, but reflecting staff input.
Yeah, so the only thing with that language, with that last sentence, it seems too, too general versus being clear that we'd like options that do have long-term environmental operating costs built into them or to be able to understand it. Because just having, you know, we're, a lot of interactions with purchasing products and services, you could have a very, you know, like, hey, we didn't take into account environmental concerns, but it actually does not make a material difference in sort of moving the dial on sustainability. So I would, I would, I think the spirit is right, but tighten up the language so that we're more clear with the networks. Because otherwise, it's, you know, and I guess I would also ask, what, what percentage of those networks are we? You know, are we driving them or are we just, you know, piggybacking and we're a small player in the whole thing?
I would, I would say we are, we are certainly not driving. We're one of hundreds and hundreds of agencies or school districts, sometimes municipalities across. sometimes municipalities across the country, often piggybacking on these cooperative contracts. And as an example, we piggyback on a contract for office and school supplies. So we, it's a national contract and we thereby get best pricing. And across, in, in that contract, we get, we get access to the entire discounted catalog of, in this case, Office Depot. And there are certainly environmentally conscious products there as well as those that are less so. But then all of our schools and departments get to choose which they purchase. For example, whether it's the post-consumer paper or virgin paper. So I'm not sure how much influence we'd have because we're just a tiny part of these, you know, just a, a little, a little piggybacker on these huge contracts.
So does that get us access to a wide range of products as opposed to the co-ops buying this in bulk and so that's what we get? Or do both things happen?
So we're not, we're not so much a co-op, we're not buying together usually. We're just getting access to various companies' catalogs at best pricing across the country. So rarely are the catalogs sort of controlled. It's like when there is a solicitation by, say, US communities for office supplies, the proposers are providing a discount off market for their entire catalog.
So really the first sentence still stands and the second sentence maybe isn't that meaningful at all in terms of our, our purchasing practices? Is that correct?
I would say we're probably not likely to have a lot of influence there. You know, the, the, the small exception might be when we piggyback on some of the state of Oregon's contracts. And I already mentioned to Department Administrative Services that when, when they've asked us what we'd like to see more of, I noted that climate justice, environmental concerns are increasing and we'd like to see that in their solicitations. But, but, you know, when we're piggybacking on somebody else's existing contract, we don't have a lot of options or way.
So I'm hearing maybe strike that second blue sentence as really not being meaningful. But the first one works?
Actually, Scott, I'm wondering if, if, and I don't know enough about it, but it sounds like the catalogs have a range of catalog of, of sustainable products. And generally, that, you know, the question is, would we want to encourage PPS purchasers to choose more sustainable products? If, if that's included in the menu, if you have, here's a, here's a low-cost unsustainable product and here's one that is, you know, in the same catalog, slightly higher, but it has, you know, greater sustainability attributes that we, you know, if we would encourage that? Or are we just, you know, always go for the lowest, the lowest price?
I, I, what I hear Emily saying is that once we're in the catalog, we have options. And, you know, and there's probably a range of different catalogs with overlapping products. So it would seem like we'd have, the, the guidance in the first sentence is really what's important in terms of the purchases that we make.
So can I ask a question? I mean, I think there are, there are equity issues involved if we're gonna even encourage, never mind mandate, schools making purchasing decisions to, to opt for a higher-priced product, especially around paper and stuff. Because generally speaking, the, the least wealthy schools are also the ones that use the most paper. Anyway, my actual question is, in these purchasing catalogs, do they make any notation around the sustainability of individual products? I mean, would, would somebody picking something out of a catalog even have any way to know?
So if we're talking about school and office supplies, which is the best example I know of, it would just be like you going to, say, an Office Depot or a similar store and you would see those that are labeled recycling or you'd see the paper that's labeled post-consumer percentage 30% or 70% or 100%. So in that sense, they know what is recycled. I think that's what they're most likely to see. Another, you know, another, we access cooperative purchasing for like furniture. I have actually not seen those catalogs and, and what they say about the sustainability of the furniture, but I'm a little doubtful that they provide a lot of information about that.
I'm guessing that for a lot of products right now, we just don't have a lot of good information about environmental impacts, particularly life cycle. And that's, that's gonna be a challenge, but again, something we can advocate for. I'm, I'm not sure what the proper arena for that is. That's, that's just gonna be an issue going forward.
You know, I just had a thought, I'm, sorry, go ahead, Emily.
Well, I was just gonna say, I do think it's possible for some of our solicitations for goods in particular to include a scoring criteria or evaluation component around environmental costs and social or environmental justice issues. I'm not sure exactly what that language would be and we'd need some experts to weigh in. The one thing to think about as we add more criteria to our, evaluation criteria to our solicitations, we, we also sort of dilute the categories that are already there, right? There's only 100 points or 100% of points, right? So just something to keep in mind as we keep adding different evaluation categories.
So what I was gonna say was, as we're talking about these things, it, it becomes more and more clear that PPS as an organization is significantly constrained by capitalism. By the way, like, everything works out there in the world. And we, we as an independent actor can't really require that anybody do anything differently because, you know, capitalism. But it does occur to me, I mean, we, we're frequently saying we should include this in our advocacy agenda. And I, I don't think we say anything about that in this policy unless I've missed it. So I'm wondering if maybe we can add that to the policy, probably under pillar three, that provide effective environmental and sustainability education and, and add, add a goal in there of, or put, put in here somewhere that PPS should include, you know, something like climate concern, sustainability, something, something in its advocacy agenda with the state, the feds, and capitalism. I don't know, something, that might be a way to satisfy our, our impulse to change things, but do it, be realistic about it.
Yeah, I think that was, that was most of the intent on that last sentence, is to kind of, you know, advocate, to, to kind of have these purchasing decisions through these networks that we have, the cooperative contracts. And that goes for any other, like, transportation and nutrition services that are bound by state and federal programs as well.
Actually, I think we're really underestimating like the, the market power we, we do have or, so there, it's not like we're the only entity that might say, for example, wanna reduce the plastic or, you know, using non, like, post-consumer paper products. But it seems like if we're like neutral, like, just throw up our hands, like, well, the schools are gonna do what the schools are gonna do, it seems like there could be guidance on, on what we'd recommend as, as a larger entity. I say, we're not, we're not insignificant. We approve lots of contracts for a fair amount of money on a pretty frequent basis. So I, I'm just wondering if we can, you know, for example, if you're an individual school or you're looking at two different, you know, choices for something that accomplishes the same, a product that accomplishes the same, like, end use. But if we said, like, you know, PPS recommends when schools are purchasing to do, you know, X, it seems like that would be useful guidance.
Do you think we should, I mean, that seems to be what the first sentence is saying. But should we add language, maybe to your point, to that schools should purchase products? So it's more targeted to who, who you're, you're talking about?
Well, maybe this is like when you get to the AD. It's just like, I guess I don't wanna just say, well, we have a decentralized system and schools will just do it, do what they, they want. So like, what, 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 what tools do schools need in order to sort of make the, you know, something, make the decision that's aligned with the policy?
So here's, here's an example. And there's, you know, there's been suggested policy around buying recycled paper instead of virgin paper. And so let me, let me ask with a budget question. I'm under the impression that most of our schools or many of them rely on PTAs to pay for copy paper or, or the goodness of individual parents and, and/or staff. Is, am I correct in that? And, and so if we're trying to actually shift to recycled paper, which is a significantly increased cost. And then as Rita mentioned earlier, the, if you're a DLI program, you've got significantly more copying costs. Those are things that aren't in the budget right now. That if we're going to make that happen, we have to, we have to cost that out and act on it. And again, that's, that's something that's easy to do, if we can do that right now. But schools aren't gonna do it because we say, hey, you should be buy recycled paper. They don't have the money. And we don't, we being in the budget do not provide schools with, with adequate funding to do that. And I, I don't think we even fund the virgin paper copy needs at many of our schools.
I think, you know, I like this second sentence here. I mean, I think, you know, Julia, you're right. Like, I think providing guidance, I think if we look at our, the catalogs we're getting, Emily, and if there's a way to highlight, you know, put a, we don't wanna put a piece of paper on the front, but, you know, because wasting more paper. But how do we highlight some of the products we recommend? I liked that idea. But I don't, I think there are, somebody's talked about equity factors here and I do think there are a number of equity factors, which is what you're raising right here, Scott. So I think we wanna, we want to encourage our schools to make these choices. And I do think, Julia, when we're doing those large centralized purchasing decisions, that we can have a lot of impact. So I think we wanna walk a middle line right here while we're in transition. That's, that's what I would encourage us to do.
So let's, I think this has been good. I think we've kind of opened up a number of issues. And there's, I think we have some work to do to, some of them are in an AD. And like, we have a different understanding of that second sentence. What I'm, what I'm hearing is board members would like central office purchasing staff to make some recommendations around some commonly purchased materials for schools. My initial intent, listening to staff in that second, was, was a misunderstanding because I thought that, that purchasing networks actually influenced particular products that we purchased, which is, is not the case. So I don't know that we need to, or would have much sway with those purchasing networks. It's, it's much more, can we, can we influence that decentralized part of it? And that's not gonna happen without money. I mean, that's just pure and simple. The budgets, we all know the, the school actual dollar budgets for supplies are incredibly tight. So I, I think, we gotta, we gotta think this through. I'm not, I'm not quite sure. But let's take this part of it back to the drawing board and see if we can work something out. I do think, looking at the, can I, let me finish one thing and then I'll get to you. The second bullet point could create scoring category and formal RFP for goods or services. I think that's probably a good thing to, to put into the policy, some, something along those lines. Okay, sorry, Julia.
No, it's okay. I, I was just gonna add, and sort of along that line, and I, I think there's definitely some probably best practices language we could grab from somewhere else. But, you know, it, it seems like, you know, if all, you know, all things being equal, if you have a choice between a recycled product and like a Styrofoam cup, like, we should be encouraging, you know, like, don't be buying the Styrofoam cup or like the plastic related. So it seemed, it does seem like there is sort of a body of information that we can arm our, you know, provide for our schools so that it's not just always like, well, they seem like they were equal cost, I just went with that. Versus like, hey, build this into the, the thinking. Or here are things that we know have a really bad environmental impact. So maybe, maybe you go for the, you know, the cheapest, less bad versus, you know, the cheapest, really bad. If we're gonna say that we're not going to, you know, we're gonna allow them to take cost, you know, cost is gonna be a factor. But it seems like more guidance than we can get to help arm them to be a sort of informed purchasers from an environmental and a sustainability standpoint would be a positive, allow them to make positive choices.
Yeah, and, and there may be actually some products that we just wanna ban the purchase of. You mentioned Styrofoam, I'm there. I mean, yeah, it's cheap, but fraky. But I'd leave that for an AD.
You could, you could have in the, in the policy, you know, staff create a, you know, list of, like, you know, sort of like the don't use pesticides that aren't on the EPA list. And then the AD or, or the purchasing rules could have more detail. Or specify what those are.
Okay. Why, why don't we move on?
Okay. So goal 1.5. So this was, used to be number three on the previous version. Um, implement a lifecycle cost analysis tool or criteria to evaluate and prioritize products based on durability, reusability, locally made, sustainably produced, biodegradable, responsibly packaged, recycled content and non-toxic. So a lot of words for you there. Um, we're basically recommending to remove this from the policy because there are a lot of words in here. There are a lot of words that we would need to define. A lot of these are kind of vague. So how would we define them? So we kind of, you know, I talked to both nutrition services and purchasing about this one, since there's some crossover. You know, another thing we pointed out for nutrition was that, you know, for our small local suppliers, it might be hard for them to support this. Um, when we have such a large need on our servings. It's also different, you know, same, same kind of thing with purchasing, you know, decentralized systems. So how do we enforce it? Um, so more of that, that barrier there as well. Um, I don't know Whitney or Emily, if you want to weigh in on this one at all.
So for me, I just, when I first looked at this and talked it over with Erin, it was, it was very hard for me to even determine what this lifecycle analysis tool would look like and then how, how folks would use it. Again, as he said, so broad. Um, and there's so many different categories of, of purchasing and supplies that we do. Um, again, decentralized decision-making. So I, I, it was almost, um, such a broad goal that it, it became sort of meaningless, I think.
Yeah. We also discussed like what exactly, where do we draw the line? So we, we use a lifecycle analysis assessment in larger construction projects when we're looking at an upfront cost of an HVAC system and versus the operational cost and what, you know, and when that payback is going to be and, you know, things like that. So we might spend more upfront in order to save on our operational cost over decades. Um, but that makes sense when you're looking at a multimillion dollar project. Um, so we were also wondering, okay, well, this wouldn't make sense to do this for a box of pencils. Or, you know, just smaller purchases that schools are making. It was, it's a lot of work and a lot of tedious effort to do for such a small purchase. So, uh, we did discuss that as well.
Thanks, Erin. I think that from my standpoint, the first thing I thought of when I looked at this was, um, you know, I said to you, I would want to see like a standard definition for each of those words to really understand um, how to incorporate some of these items. And I think if there's a way for us to, um, start with maybe some of, a few of those priorities and implement that and start small and then build out from there on adding words or measurables, then that might be a, a more achievable target. And our department has used, um, locally made for a number of years. Um, you know, over almost 15 years now. And, but that definition looks different from district to district and it, it might hold a different value um, as we start to explore what that looks like across our own internal district. Um, so just coming up with some definitions, I think would be my first, um, question when I saw this. And then again, knowing that there are new, um, business partners, partners that are emerging from this, sometimes they struggle with, being able to respond to all of these things right out, right out of the gate. And so just be mindful of, of, um, what that looks like when we come across solicitations or requests, um, for doing business with us.
So, uh, I've been thinking about this one. Um, and I appreciate what you just said, Whitney. Um, because again, this policy is not a start doing this tomorrow policy. It's a, it's a long-term phase in, which is the language you just used. Uh, but my, the, the main thing I've been thinking of, even if we had, you know, in an AD, we theoretically define these or at least give them, give, give them more definition. But I don't think it's PPS's responsibility to, you know, do a lifecycle analysis or, come up with a tool. I, I think that would take an incredible amount of work over a large number of products. Uh, so I was wondering about language that would say something as, I, I would think though, in the market, those kinds of tools are going to develop as more and more purchases, purchasers are interested in this and as there's more regulation. Please, hopefully. That there would be tools that would come into play that would be reliable, uh, become industry standards, so to speak. Uh, and maybe some language that said as tools like that became available, the district would use those in evaluating their purchases. With something like that work. Um, and again, with some phase in language as opposed to removing the, the language altogether.
Yeah, I agree, Scott, because, I mean, Europe is way ahead of us on this. And I do think there are, there are a number of tools depending on the product and service, um, to be able to look at lifecycle analysis. And in fact, you know, consumer, consumers, uh, are, um, demanding this information. And like I say, there's some very large uh, markets in the world that are now requiring this. Um, so it seems like instead of just removing this, it would be, um, and maybe it's for, for now, adding language as you suggest, like as available. Um, and again, I, I think the way this is worded, it's not that, hey, if you use the lifecycle and now this tool and, you know, make your decision based on it. But I think that it's rather surprising for people when they start looking at these tools and like whether materials, you know, that are going into a product are sustainable and what their lifecycle is. Um, so to me, there's a, there's a way to use this as, again, an educated and, and form to make sort of informed sustainability purchasing decisions. But this is, this is, this is the trend of where things are going for products. And the, and the Europeans are way ahead.
So for me, there's a, there's a little bit of overlap with this one and the one we were just talking about. Um, you know, it's, they have the same end goal. This one just calls out some, you know, more specific terms and calls out the lifecycle analysis tool. Um, but we were discussing in the last goal, like of kind of providing a guidebook on here, here's some highlighted options that are more sustainable purchases. So to me, I think we can maybe blend these two together in some way. Um, and kind of, and make them work. Um, I don't know how you feel about that, Scott?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that sounds reasonable. So, uh, maybe we can work offline on that. And, but ideally we get a final version of this policy, get to go um, for public outreach at our next meeting. And we get language that everybody's happy with. Okay. How we do, how are we doing on time, Director Moore?
Um, we're, we're okay. We're good until 5:35. So keep going.
We're good until 5:30. So we can take a five minute break between 5:30 and 5:35.
We're good till 5:25. So we can take a 10 minute break.
I think we only need a five minute break, but we can argue about that later.
Yeah, but, but there's, there's incentive for you folks.
Okay. So stick it on 1.5. This is the new number three. It was previously, um, five through six. It's, we did a little bit of consolidation on, on some of these items that were overlapping. Um, so transition from virgin paper to maximum post-consumer recycled content paper goods. We've already kind of discussed this issue and how that affects school budgets. So I won't spend too much time talking about that. I will point out that most of the numbers we've seen, um, are about two to three times the cost. Um, and, um, something else we discussed is maybe, you know, getting some principal feedback or some school secretary feedback on, you know, how this might affect their budget. Um, so maybe that could be part of our community and school engagement process. But there was another, um, there was another number. So this was number five and number six was talking about, going off of paper at the district office. So, you know, transitioning to a paperless model. And I'll let Emily talk a little bit about that because they had some success in their department, um, transitioning during the pandemic.
Sure. Um, you know, we were headed in this direction, but the pandemic, uh, made us, uh, go there overnight, which is completely, um, paperless processing and approval of all contracts. So we now only accept contract submissions electronically. And then we do our entire workflow and approval process electronically. And, uh, nothing ever gets, uh, printed out unless it's one of those few contracts where we need a notary. Um, so, and all of our communications are now electronic. So we don't use paper at all. So we went from a heavy user, uh, paper user department because all of those contracts came to us in paper or were print, or we printed out when they were submitted to us electronically. And then we pass the paper from place to place, um, during the approval process. Um, and then filed it away in, uh, you know, for six years until we destroyed them. So we just don't do any of that anymore. Um, I, I assume there are a lot of other departments who've been successful, um, in moving quite quickly thanks to COVID in that, into a paperless environment. Um, and I'm, I imagine there's others that could still use some help. Obviously that's going to be less feasible in our schools. And just to highlight one of the other equity issues in schools, because I, I, I did a bunch of research a while back on how we, um, fund and supply school supplies to our schools. Um, and so many of our schools are able to rely on their, well, a certain percentage of our schools are able to rely on their parents and, and their families to bring in their school supplies. They are able to send home extensive lists and put out calls for extra reams of paper when they need them. And then there are other schools that don't do that at all and spend a, a great deal of their consolidated on paper. So I just wanted to highlight, it really is a big issue.
So I just have to ask, since this is like pretty granular, but we do live in like the forest products, uh, capital of the US. Is that virgin?
So much anymore.
Well, the Pacific Northwest, and I'm sorry, I'm wondering, is that like Canadian or is, is that US or Southwest? Or I guess is it Northwest, Southwest or Canadian or like somewhere else?
Southeast is where a lot has migrated.
Well, I'm just curious, the pa, the pa, that paper that we're paying, you know, then to have it trucked across the country.
So my understanding, very unsophisticated understanding, but of why we've seen paper in, uh, prices increase so much is that so many mills have closed down in recent years.
Could you say that again? I lost the last part.
Sorry. I, I've heard that so many paper mills have closed down in the past, whether it's five to 10 years, that, that that is the reason for the dramatic increase in paper prices we've seen in the past several years.
I think there's also a lot of foreign competition. Okay. Any, any further issues with this language or suggestions? Are we good to go there?
Yeah. So basically we're, we, we combined the, those two. Um, going paperless and transitioning from, when we do use paper, from virgin paper to post-consumer recycled paper. We're, we're combining both of those into one in the blue text below, saying reduce paper copying by transitioning to increased electronic communication.
So you're, you
Oh, well, I think
the whole concept altogether of trying not to be
Well, we don't want to mandate it because of the equity issues that we've been discussing, um, as far as recycled paper goes, um, unless the price comes down. We can, we can definitely encourage it. We can, we can write some language in here that encourages it. And we can, like we talked about before, come up with that guiding process for schools to choose more sustainable options. But because of the cost and the equity issues, we don't feel like it should be mandated for schools to make that, um, a priority.
I, I think, I, I mean, I get why we can't mandate, but I think a recommendation be, because it's not going to be possible to go completely paperless. And so I think adding some kind of guidance about, you know, preferential treatment for the recycled, I, I think that would be helpful.
So should we add some language about, you know, the district will create a guide on sustainable purchasing or something like that?
The district either, either needs to do it or not. I mean, we can't have schools do it. We can't expect parents to do it. It's either this is a budget item or it isn't, uh, in terms of recycled paper. And I don't know if we have, do we have any kind of dollar estimate? Like if, if we did say, nope, tomorrow, every purchase is going to be recycled paper. Um, do we have any idea what that dollar differential total would be in a year? Ballpark?
I'm not sure about hard numbers, but two to three times the cost. Emily, do you have, uh?
You know, uh, my purchasing manager has done some analysis on the paper issue because we also looked at a while back, the potential of centralizing paper and, and then distributing to schools, which turned out not to, to be a, uh, economical or feasible idea. Um, but I, I, I suspect we could come back to you with some numbers based on the purchasing that happens off of our, our, uh, private marketplace e-commerce site, which is where our, all of our schools access, um, our, uh, catalogs of, um, materials that are approved under, under cooperative contract.
And I guess the other thing is because prices are going to swing, we, if, if it's a not insignificant dollar amount, we could see that swing from year to year out of our control. Just another factor to, to think about as we go ahead with this. I mean, I'm just at the point where I don't understand why we don't fund paper period for schools. I think it's ridiculous that we have to rely on parents. But, um, there you go. Okay. Um, next up.
Um, still on 1.5. This was previously number eight. Um, corporate management of durable trays, utensils, collecting food scraps and recycling into staff responsibilities. So this would, this is talking about both, uh, nutrition staff, but also custodians. Um, and Whitney, you know more about this than I do, but something we discussed was these are union employees. So any, any changes to job responsibilities require, um, negotiations with our union partners. Um, and that's not my area of expertise, but I don't know, Whitney, if you wanted to add any more detail there.
I'm sure. So not necessarily negotiated, but just, um, it'd be some conversations about added work expectations. Um, and so that would be working, uh, with the SIU nutrition services and, um, custodians um, on this, um, piece. I think that, um, the one part that often, um, we often struggle with is, um, when we want to expand into the, um, what we call the, the front of the house, the cafeteria. the cafeteria, food collection and separation. So I think that will probably be the biggest piece. We're already, we've already incorporated durable trays and utensils into our staff's responsibilities. And recycling is happening inside the, inside the kitchens as well as organic collection in all of the kitchens across the district in the back of what we call the back of the house. So we've already implemented all those things. So that's why I said this is, this is doable. The added piece being some of the, the, I think highlighting where we have success stories in some of our schools and seeing where we can try to bridge that gap moving forward. But it is, it is difficult in some schools where if we rely on staff alone to do the food separation in the cafeteria, it can, it can fall short. I think that I would highly encourage education and behavioral practices within our students to make sure that they are, they own this piece as well and are stewards and learn those great behaviors of separating their waste when it comes to the cafeteria and are less reliant on one person in, as an individual. So if that person's gone or absent, we still have that, that behavior and that practice in place.
So does this belong in policy? To me, this is more how we do things. I mean, if, if we're going to do X, then of course somebody has to do it and management and staff have to figure it out. And students have to figure out that shared responsibility. So, well, yes, this, this is part of the transition, but does this belong in policy? Court members?
Well, in the, in the latest version that I have, it's been deleted.
Yeah, that's why I wrote, it was number eight in version 19.
Right. So I think the question is, do we stick with the deletion or undelete? And I'm, I'm okay with deleting.
My preference would not be to delete because I look at the things that, you know, from a day-to-day basis, which most stick out of like, wow, look at all that, those things that we're not recycling. And it just seems like this, this is part of like the daily waste stream out of PPS. Is, is the question here whether the last three, three words incorporating into staff responsibility? Or is it just the issue of having the durable, the durable trays and utensils?
Now they're, they're already in there in another policy line. This is the,
This is the staff, the staff requirement. Yeah. I guess I just have a question about this. So don't, don't we already have some sort of requirements? Like they have to put the plastic utensils out or, I mean, are there things that are, that are done? And this would just be different, different thing, different things they would be, work they would be doing, not necessarily new work, but different work?
The, the trays, managing the durable trays, the utensils, recycling and collecting food waste in all the kitchens is already incorporated. So I think that was part of the thinking around deleting is that's already been, being done. The one that stands out that's not being universally incorporated and has, has had some pushback due to availability of staff or hiring additional staff to, to support. And it's fallen on the request of volunteers to support has been the food collection in the cafeteria or separation in the cafeteria where all students are eating.
I, I would say I don't think this belongs in policy because it's a moment in time issue, right? To incorporate these, all these pieces into staff responsibilities. First of all, some of them already are incorporated, except for the food scraps one. So to put this in always sounds like we haven't done it yet and we're working towards it. So if we had something like ensure that's basically ensure someone's responsible for this, these things. So it doesn't have to necessarily be staff, like you said, sometimes it's volunteers. But if we wanted to have it in policy, it would be, hey, remember, we actually have to have people to do this and make sure we've covered that. That's what I would be more comfortable putting in the policy if we were going to, but I'm also okay to delete it because it's already being done.
Here's the deal. We have a ton of policies. I'm not familiar with any policy that has a line in it that says, make sure somebody does this policy, change somebody's job description or whatever. So I think, I think this is like a little too much.
I mean, as long as we have that, that we're actually doing that, not, not,
Yeah, it's, that's in a different, there's, there's language already in there. Yeah. Okay, next.
Okay, moving on to 2.1. Number four, prioritize foods that are local, organic, seasonal, plant-based, minimally processed and/or minimally packaged and lower embodied carbon while meeting requirements of the National School Lunch Program. So the only comment we had from Nutrition Services was to change National School Lunch Program to USDA Child Nutrition Programs, since we deal with multiple different programs with different requirements. But we did reword it a little bit. And this kind of goes back to that other one when we were talking about the transportation co-op and the network. So, you know, work with USDA to make nutrition programs more climate friendly. So kind of building in some advocacy work there. Whitney, I don't know if you have anything to add here?
Lee, Whitney has already been doing that for at least the last week, right? Wink, wink, nudge, nudge.
Just the last week. Yeah.
Yes, I appreciate that, Erin. Yeah, I just wanted to call out that we have the National School Breakfast Program, National School Lunch Program, After School Supper Program, Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, Services to Head Start, Breakfast, Lunch and Snack, and our Summer Feeding Program. So there's just a whole host of programs under the big umbrella of USDA Child Nutrition. Each one has their own nuances, but there is efforts to try and use this last year to highlight the benefits of, of streamlining, especially for sponsors like ourselves as school districts, to better serve our students. And hopefully that will help us to push this forward. But I wanted to make sure that we incorporated that because what I heard, while our, our lunch program definitely serves more students, our breakfast program is most visible. And that's where we often see more comments from our students and from our staff and our families about our sustainability efforts and where we'd like to, we are challenging ourselves to influence more changes.
And if nobody stops me, I'll say what's next.
Moving down to 3.2, number three, provide annual training to custodians, kitchen staff, teachers, principals, and all school staff related to climate impacts and solutions relevant to their job. Establish accountability and integrate sustainable practices into each position. So our only feedback here was, you know, we do provide training already. So some of this is already being done, but we, we wanted to remove this phrase, establish accountability. It just didn't feel right having that in the policy language. But other than that, it looks good for us. Any comments, questions? Believe that was it. So we have eight minutes to spare. If anyone has any other questions or comments for discussion? Maybe next steps?
Yeah, just wanted to check in with Jackson and Nathaniel and Oscar. Any comments, observations y'all have?
I, I just think, you know, I don't want us to not include anything because we're fearing or want it will be repeated. I think it's fine if something repeats, just as long as we make sure that it's in the policy or in the administrative correct.
Okay. We've got some people in the waiting room. So can we let those folks in and see if they have comments? Shane, Noel. Welcome.
Hi there. As, we do have a few comments. Thanks for giving us a chance to provide some input. I think our, our top feedback was around the, the point that you had the most discussion on, I think, which was purchasing. And, you know, the discussion around electric buses kind of emphasized either the, the importance of why we really need to incorporate climate impact in these decisions and in the contracts that are awarded. One suggestion we have to simplify that language and, and maybe it would condense a couple of the issues that you talked about would, would going, stay pretty high level and say something about implement best practices in environmentally preferable purchasing or EPP. And for specifically for high volume and high impact products. So what we mean, you know, high volume being the things you buy a lot of papers, probably one example of that. High impact would be things that, well, buses are obvious, but that's also a huge, a high dollar value. There might be things that are bought less frequently and aren't that expensive, but have a huge or a larger climate impact, like refrigerants, for example. So those kinds of things you could look at and focus your, the, the purchasing tools that you, you use, for example, life cycle, life cycle analysis wouldn't have to be done kind of wholesale for all those bits and pieces. But pick a, pick a couple of things that have a, a bigger impact and, and start there. And we have some resources. I'm guessing Erin is quite familiar with, with them. But, you know, lots of other governments and the EPA have tools and resources, the Responsible Purchasing Network, EPED and others, that we could help provide some input on if that, if that's helpful. And then another thing that, that just kind of surfaced through this discussion around staff responsibilities. And, and we have some in goal 3.2, point three, which Erin touched on, striking out the establish accountability thing. I mean, I think it's just, again, reinforces the importance of all staff to kind of get trained up. And, and when you're making these people, the folks making a purchasing decisions over time will be more tuned up on what the, the policy goals on and make decisions that align with that. And you could add in that 3.2.3, if we're taking out the established accountability, integrate sustainable practices into each position description. So that as you hire new staff, it's, it's part of the job description, knowing that it's more desirable to hire people. For example, I'm just, not to pick on purchasing, but like purchasing officers who have experience in environmentally preferable purchasing and other tools that are used in that area. Sorry, I heard a kid coming. I was going to close the door. The, and then another thing, we noticed that a version of this policy that was in the, the last two meetings had two items that were highlighted in yellow. There was a goal under 3.3.6 and 1.3.5 that weren't included in this version. And, and we wondered if that was just something that didn't get brought across. But 3.3.6 was support partner organizations that provide hands-on, place-based, experiential climate education for students. And 1.3.5 was establish maintenance plans to care for school grounds, including through community partnerships and student stewardship programs. And those weren't, those were, I think, ads by staff, either staff or the directors working on the policy. So just flagging that, we, we thought they were great additions and would be happy to see them carry through in future versions. And then we, we wanted to appreciate the addition in the item 2.1.4. Overall, we thought the staff input was really thoughtful and practical. But the working with USDA to make nutrition programs more climate friendly, we thought that was a great upstream leverage point. Because we, we understand that your hands are tied for a lot of these issues when, when you have requirements from higher levels. I'm going to invite Mike and Noel to chip in as well.
Jane, can you repeat those missing items again so I can follow up on those?
Sure, I can email them to you, Erin.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we have had some version, version tracking issues.
There were also, you know, sometimes we moved it to a different section. So that might've been the case, but I just wanted to double check.
I, I do think you're right. I think we, we lost track of them and that was totally inadvertent. Unintentional. So thank you for, drawing our attention to that. Noel, did you have anything you wanted to add? I had a few comments.
Just quickly, we recognize that the window's closing for recommendations to really influence during this phase. But I believe in a previous version, the preamble, the first three paragraphs may have been a little, little bit more clear and strong. I noticed in the current version, the word sustainable, sustainability, environmental shows up a lot in there. And I think that it could just use a little bit more word sniffing. Additionally, it'd be great to, like the word goals is included. There are the two overarching goals and then there are lots and lots of goals underneath. So if possible, it could be a little bit more clear to change, like the, you know, 20 goals down below, change that to objectives or, or something else that really sets the goals at the top apart. So those are just a couple editing suggestions we had. Thank you.
So I had just a few questions and they're kind of big questions. And they revolve around public review and comment. It's, I'm still wondering what happens, because this isn't going to go to the board as a recommended version, is my understanding. It's going to go out to public comment first. So that was one question. Another was, and I'm asking some of these because obviously the policy committee is going to change in membership significantly. And so the continuity is important to me. So I was wondering also about how the referral of the reporting and communications to the resolution is going to work. And then if you guys had any idea about when there would be a new policy committee formed and when you might meet again? Well, I think Rita and I, of course, are retiring from the official board and becoming the puppet masters, the behind the scenes. So we have picked the new members for the policy committee, but we're not ready to announce that yet. What is, no, I, I think those are good but unknowable questions. A new board chair and vice chair. And possibly plural on either of those will be elected in July. And it's been up to the board chairs, as you know, to name committee members. So. up to the board chairs, as you know, to name committee members. So, you know, July, August, I would hope policy would be named pretty early because it's piled higher and deeper with the policy work. But that's, that's kind of out of our control, but I would hope that would be the case.
I just had a, maybe a quick point of clarification. Mike, when you said it would go out for public comment, it was my understanding it's going to go out for community engagement, not public comment. Cause I think a public comment is like you have the first reading and then you go for public comment versus you go out for community, community engagement, which is a sort of separate and distinct from the public comment. And then we take the feedback from community engagement, fold that in, come up with a first reading and then it would, then it would go to, for the first reading and out for like what's considered the formal public comment period. So to, to me that you've got, there's plenty of time for the board to do its organizing and get this committee set up. And that's, that doesn't need to happen before that public, the community engagement piece happens. So I, I, I don't see that there's going to be this, hey, we're stuck because the board hasn't yet set up its committees and done all its appointment yet. I, I think there, there can be a substantial amount of work happening in the community and I'm, I'm glad to hear that Rita and Scott are, are signing up to, to, to engage with that process as well. Cause the, the more hands, the better. But I, I don't think there's going to be a tension there.
Okay. So that was helpful.
Yeah. Can I just, I, I think the hope is, and I think it's doable. I, I think the hope is that between, between today's discussion and the next policy meeting, which is at the end of June. Hopefully by the end of that, by the end of June, I'm shooting for having the language of this policy nailed down. So that it would be ready to be, it, it would be ready to be the subject of the community engagement process that's being planned for the fall. It's not going to happen during the summer, but it would happen during the fall. And, and I think it's already on, Jonathan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think it's already on the staff calendar. That
I also.
School will open and then there'll be, you know, some, some reasonable amount of time after school opens, the engagement process would begin.
Also, our friends have pointed out that we can do engagement with organizations over the summer.
So just, so there will be another policy committee meeting then and another draft. And then the expectation is to go to community engagement with that. Okay. And that helped Julia. So I think that's a good distinction there. There still will be a referral to the full board and then a public comment process in addition. Okay. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Unfortunately, it's 5:36.
Okay.
Which
So are we?
Isn't terrible, but can we get five minutes now?
Yes, please. So we'll, we'll adjourn now. We'll come back in five minutes. So whatever that is, 5:41.
We'll adjourn just recess.
Yep, recessing. I just want to thank staff again for their input. You guys rock. Hope you know that. And of course our community members as well. Again, thank you for showing up again. And I would like to touch base with the three of you and or others. Because I, you've also sent in some comments on a, an earlier version that I want to go through because there still might be some, some good stuff in there to, for the final draft.
Okay. Since Scott talked for another minute, it's now 5:37. So we will reconvene at 5:42. So it's now 5:43. We are reconvening the policy committee. Next, next item on the agenda is the District Foundation. And I'm going to hand off the facilitation duties to Director Lowry, who's the committee lead person on this, these two policies. Take it away.
All right. So basically, like Rita said, we have two policies here. It's, we're kind of navigating this space and want to be really clear about the language. So we have one policy, which is about the governance of the fund for PPS and some of that sort of structure of that organization. And then the other policy is about local school-based fundraising. And, and I think sometimes when we talk about the foundation, I know that I get lazy in my language and do this. I may use the word the foundation to talk about the fund for PPS. And I may use the word foundation to also mean local school-based fundraising, especially when it's local school foundations. So we want to make really clear like what we're talking about. And sort of the plan overall for this piece of policy work is we have some technical changes to the PPS fund governance policy that need to be made. And then we want to take the local school-based fundraising policy and really do some community engagement and some work around that. So just being really clear that we're talking about two different policies, two different things. But again, they're interconnected in this sort of universe of fundraising. So I'm going to turn it over to Robin to do some, she had done a PowerPoint for us last time that really talked about the fund for PPS piece. And now she's going to finish up that policy with, at my understanding, kind of an overview of some of the local school foundations and how they connect to local school-based fundraising. Is that correct, Robin?
Yeah. So we didn't quite get through all of the slides. And so what was going, I was going to start with where we left off on slide nine. And then maybe if I could just get through all of these slides and then we could take some questions and discussion. And then I'll turn it over to Jonathan if, if we want to look deeper at the district foundation policy, the red line version, once I'm finished.
Okay, great. So we'll hold questions till the end.
Can I ask one thing? There's no page numbers on the slides. Which slide is slide nine? What's the headline?
Parent groups and the schools. And Roseanne or Cara can, one of you share the slides? Or shall I?
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? Since it's been three weeks, I think, since we last saw this PowerPoint. It might be worth doing a, a very quick review of the first part of the PowerPoint before launching into the new material.
Okay.
I, I don't know about anybody else, but I have COVID brain big time. So three weeks was a
Yeah. Like the quick two-minute overview, Director Moore, is that okay, Robin?
Sure.
So, so thanks for the opportunity. So again, as Chair Lowry shared, you know, what, what we're trying to, to, to bring forward here as a conversation is both the, a, a conversation about district foundation governance or over the, the, the relationship between the fund for PPS and PPS and then period, then school-based fundraising. And so as we shared a few weeks ago, we believe that, you know, parent fundraising is one of the several ways that parents are involved, that our business communities, our community members are involved. And so we really want to really think through how we bring a collective approach to, to this work. As you know, the strategic partnerships team of PPS has oversight and support of the 501(c)(3) fundraising entity, the fund for PPS. And so, so wanting to differentiate, so the last time we, we met, we talked about the district foundation policy. So really the district foundation policy was initiated to give permission for the district to establish a foundation. And so we've attached the red line version that delineates the governance structure between the school district and the foundation. And, and then therefore what we're going to address today is talking about the, the aspects of the parent groups and school fundraising. So, so really last week it was about saying the fund for PPS is an independent 501(c)(3) that has a relationship with the district and we want to move that forward. And so that's where we are. So Robin, take it away.
And Robin, you're able to share. Okay. Thanks. Okay. So you all see parent groups and the schools on there now, that, that slide? Okay, thanks. So this policy is, is separate from the district foundation. But the district foundation policy didn't really outline the relationship with the local school foundations. That was sort of like a, an informal memo that was kind of attached that set up the one-third, 33% that school foundations would contribute to the PPS parent fund that is redistributed. That was never in official like board policy documents. But looking at this, parent groups and the school policy, we think that this is an opportunity to really flesh out the, the whole issue of school-based fundraising and both the culture of fundraising and the local school foundations, if, if we're going to change the formula, or if we're going to say no more funding of FTE, like all of those could be included in that foundation along with other issues that I wanted to present in some of these next slides. And so our proposal here is that we take a deep dive on this policy and do community engagement in the fall and winter. And that we would bring this back to the board policy committee in February of 2022.
I did want to say just briefly.
Yes.
Related to this, this policy, the parent groups and school are a few administrative directives that will also need to be re-aligned. They, the implementation directs local school foundations in a variety of ways, but the, the policy is from 2002. And so it's definitely not with an equity lens in place. And, you know, some of the, even the amounts, you know, it's a $5,000 limit for certain things is, is not reflective of what we're seeing today.
Right. But typically we would do the board policy first and the, and the AD would follow. Is that correct?
Absolutely. But I just wanted for people, for, for reference sake, if you're looking at the policy, you can see how it was, what, what was, you know, what we were thinking at the time in terms of implementation.
Right. And that, and that's really the key issue of what we wanted, the, the reexamination of this and maybe even changing the name, parent groups and the schools to school-based groups and fundraising and PPS, maybe changing the name of the policy itself and applying the racial equity and social justice lens to the, the whole universe of fundraising.
So just a, just a question about, because I'm, and this isn't like with a formed opinion about direction at all, but if you were working on the policy, the the 7.10.030, and you made changes, but you left in that you can still buy FTE, that seems like then it's a unless, and I don't have your, I don't have your red line version. It wasn't in the documents that were posted, at least for this meeting. But you still, you would have a affirmation that it was still okay to purchase FTE?
It's not actually in there. It, it, the, the establishing of a district foundation really established the PPS foundation that became all hands raised. So the, the things that it says that it, that you can fundraise for is for the, the district foundation. It doesn't reference local school foundations in the policy.
Right.
Director, so the, the district, the policy is, the red line is included in the public documents. I'm referring to it right now.
I printed a little packet where.
And if not, you can find it on the board website and the agenda. So you can see that version. I don't know if that would be helpful to you.
So I can do a quick, just as, as, as Roseanne, if you can resend that to the, or Cara, if someone can send that, that would be great. But as we're, since, since we're addressing this issue here, let's just kind of cut to the chase. The foundation policy, in other words, 7.10.030 does a couple of things. One, it, the board authorizes the establishment of a foundation. Two, it says that the foundation will be incorporated as a 501(c)(3). And then upon dissolution, the foundation's assets would be distributed in pursuant to the organization's articles of incorporation. It addresses the independence of the foundation. And it addresses the, the, the salaries and, and financial implications of the foundation with the district. And the, the, it also addresses the, the audit by external auditors of the foundation. So that, just really high level, those are, that's all it establishes as an, as, as, as a policy.
It's really about the governance of, the, the governing structure and the relationship between the district and the fund.
So I'm, I'm sorry, but and maybe you can just even put it up on the screen what the red line says, because I'm, I'm not, again, I printed up a packet and I'm not, just not seeing it and I'm on.
Julie, are you talking about, so let's call it the district foundation, the fund for Portland schools and school foundations?
Yeah. So I'm, I was looking at the, the non-red line version of the district foundation. And so I need to make that a lot bigger. Now you've made it a lot bigger on my screen.
Biggest I can make it.
Yeah, it's. So it takes out all like that commentary about here's what the money can be used for?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that, and then that moves it, that our attempt is to then move that over to the other policy discussion around schools and fundraising groups.
But even when it was established, it really though was about the PPS foundation could fund instructional staff. It, it didn't really, it, it became the school-based foundations. And I don't know, you know, I wasn't around then. So I, I don't know at what point that became the mechanism, but the actual policy doesn't even address the, the idea of school-based foundations.
Well, that, from the very beginning, it always came out of the school-based foundations versus from the Portland Schools Foundation, which was. Well, that, from the very beginning, it always came out of the school-based foundations versus from the Portland Schools Foundation, which was
Just the language isn't really here, so.
Yeah, so one of, just my commentary on this, I'd want to go back to the documents that we were provided. Oops.
Do you need to see it still?
Yeah. Maybe you just drop in the chat would be most helpful. The, when we approved it, there was a very clear
Julia, I'm not understanding, this is in board books. This document is in board books.
I know.
Second one. It's the middle of the three that deal with the policy, the foundation policies.
Okay, well, I I've got two screens going, and I I can't, I can't find it, sorry. And I printed out the packet, but I don't know why it wasn't in the printed out packet. Anyway, what I would like to do is go back and look at when we agreed to take back the local school foundations and create the foundation, what the sort of governance mechanisms were there were in place, and just look at the alignment with with this. And I know, Jonathan, we had some conversations at the time about that. So that'd be one thing I'd want to do, just go back and look at that.
Sorry, just to make sure I'm, there's clarity. Make sure there's a crosswalk between the operational agreement and this policy, is that?
Right, and and also what was presented to the board at the time, just.
Understood. Yeah, makes sense.
I've got it here somewhere. And so if you take, if you take out the, here's what the, that laundry list of things you can buy, I think that does address one of the issues. And then, I say, just from my framework of thinking, I'd want to then look at the current structure of that other policy and see how it fits, because I'd, you know, just as somebody who's been around for a long period of time, this this has been sort of the longest-running discussion around fundraising within the parent, within the diverse parent community, and it like, it's probably time to land land the plane on the topic, because it's always been like, it's not in policy, it's out, it's out there in this, like, memo.
I, Julia, I I'm, I feel like we, yes, we need to know where we've been, but we also, there's been a lot of practices that haven't been in policy, and I feel like this policy that's before us, this redline one, is really an attempt to put into practice what we've been saying for so long. And that, you know, this stuff about the local school fundraising piece is a separate piece that we're going to do with community engagement, but this is really about this, the Fund for PPS, and what that relationship is like. And so I feel like you know, we do, we do know where we've been, but but we also need to be moving forward, and the past is important.
I was talking about the other policy, not the the foundation policy, just.
So let's, let's take those as two separate things. Can we talk about just this foundation policy in this moment? Because we're gonna, this is the one that we're gonna try to vote out of committee at our next meeting. And then that local school foundation policy is the one that we're gonna do some more community engagement before we move forward with that.
Well, as I said, I would like to go look at all the the conversations and the documentation that we had at the at the, at the front end when we approved the transfer over. And just look at the governance of that before I'm ready to, like, just move something out.
Yeah. No, I, Director Bren Edwards, I'm happy to 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 walk through that with you, and and I'm sure Robin will join me to to do that.
And like I say, move, taking out the laundry list does remove, I think, an issue, I mean, it moves the other, the issue to the other conversation.
And so now I think that's where Robin is going to bring us into that conversation now. So, and then we'll come back again, I think, to the foundation, just as a, I think Haley just said, or Chair Lowry just said. The attempt here is to 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 move, to move through the the that governance piece as 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 with due diligence and responsibility as, you know, as and and as fast as we can. So so we'll circle back with you, Julia, or Director Bren Edwards on that. And then again, and then I think the the heart of the conversation, Director Bren Edwards, to your point, is that fundraise, you know, this has been conversations about fundraising, and so really bringing all of that together into this policy. So, Robin, do you want to share your screen again?
Yeah, and I thought maybe I should start by sharing what that parent groups and the schools policy is. That this is what that policy is right now, and the subject of the slide that I that I wanted to just move through. There's only, there's only a couple. So it it talks about the the role of fundraising of parent groups and this, it doesn't address fundraising directly, but the AD that Mary Kane referenced is all about fundraising. So this overall policy is is kind of generic and it doesn't say too much. So we really, in our, we would probably line out this whole paragraph and start fresh. So does, should I move back to the slides now? Does anyone want to?
Yeah, let's go back to the slides, Robin.
Okay.
I'm loving afternoon meetings, by the way, where I can have the sun directly in in front of me. And this this glow that I have is just amazing. Sorry.
Your vitamin D.
I just had to talk about the glow.
I I don't think you can see your computer screen like that, though.
That is true.
All right, so so there is kind of two buckets that we thought could be addressed in this other policy, and one would be the local school foundations. And that would be a process of applying the racial equity and social justice lens and really looking at the data, a deep dive in there, and looking at the formula right now, and how it operates, and whether it would make sense to change the formula. Here was a starting point, an idea of increasing the amount that school foundations contribute. It's just a starting point. We're not saying this is the solution. We're not even saying, like, we must fund, continue to fund FTE. It's just a recognition that this really needs to be addressed in policy directly, the formula and and what are the rules around it. And there's also issues around who has access and who makes decisions, both in terms of how, how, what positions are being fundraised for, how they will be used. We believe that the whole school community needs to be at the table, not not just the the people who are organizing events and like, which is typically like a spring auction is typically like the main event that people raise money for. And that the programs for whom the educational equity programs are meant to benefit in in that school community should also be at the table. And that the ability to participate in these events, that there should also be free access, a a certain percentage that this is typically done through, you know, an anonymous process through a school office. But I think that it varies in different school communities, whether that's available and to whom, and who knows about it. So it it's also, these are some of the issues around the culture of fundraising. And then we have, would like to request all school-based fundraising groups register with the district, and we, you know, we started this process in February. And we believe that it's important that we know who are all of the groups and what are, what is their mission, what it, what are they raising money for, and how is it being spent? And that there needs to be more oversight when those funds impact the educational experience of students in the school and the physical space in schools. Certainly, traditionally, PTAs are, were created to to directly support teachers. And so we're not saying that we would that all monies need to come through the district, but there has been some mission drift, or, you know, going into actual contracts for positions in schools that PTAs and other school-based groups have been engaging in. There have been, there's investments in the playgrounds and improving the grounds. These are things that directly impact the educational experience of those students, and we believe that the district should have some oversight of those things. So those would be the purpose of.
Hey, Robin, can I just quickly just clarify?
Yep.
When you, when you say oversight, I think, you know, obviously, we understand that many of these organizations are independent, and so want to honor and respect their independence. So it's not necessarily about oversight in the traditional sense, but more about really making sure that we have an understanding of the types of dollars and types of resources that are coming into our school communities, just so we understand the whole picture, which is something that I know directors have, over the years, under, you know, that I've been here, have requested this. I know that it's it's a conversation that has been brought up many times by the CBRC, et cetera, et cetera. So just wanting to kind of differentiate between, again, wanting, it's not about, you know, control and making sure that that, but it's it's really making sure that the 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 partners and the folks and the community folks that we're working with you know, are 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 abiding by our, our you know, our our rules and our our guidance and our our procedures. So so just wanted to differentiate that, if that was okay.
I have a question. Are we allowed to, like, require them to submit it? And then what would happen if they didn't submit their financial?
We're, we're gonna actually let Robin get through all of the slides and then ask questions, Jackson, but we'll, we'll put that in our parking lot and answer that when we're done here. Thank you.
I think what I'd like to do here is just skip ahead to this idea of the timeline. So this would be the actions that would need to take place leading up to February 2022. So develop the community engagement plan utilizing the district's community engagement project planning tool. So we we have that established by the Community Engagement Department. So we'd need to answer all those questions and come up with a formalized plan and collect more data. There is some data provided in the there's a link in in the slideshow, but it was also in the previous policy committee meeting materials around it's called a budget heat map, and it kind of shows the amounts of staffing that were purchased with School Foundation and PPS Parent Fund. There's more data that people have requested, and we we need to tap our SPP department to to bring all of that forth, to be ready in the fall for community engagement process. We could, would work with key stakeholders individually and in small groups, and then also host two to three community engagement meetings. Then in January, we would be ready to share recommendations with the public for final input and present policy revisions to the board in February. So that concludes the the slideshow, if we want to open it up for discussion.
And Robin, if I may, I just add here on on the engagement, as directors now, we we've as an organization, thanks to the leadership of Shanice Clark of Adopted Equity Centered Community Design Process, where we're really looking to create space and opportunity to lift up voices that we don't hear from, right? And I think in this conversation in particular, the the folks that we don't hear from, we need to lift those up to really understand, you know, what is at play? And and not let and and make sure that that we have an authentic process that carries the voices of our students, and particularly our students of color and our families of color. I I just, I I find that so important. And I know that's that's a value that this board and our collective body believes in. So just wanted to to say that.
Thank you, Jonathan. I think, let's start with Jackson's question that he asked on those two slides back about funding.
Yeah, so the public 501(c)(3) need to make their financials publicly available. They are available through the Department of Oregon's Department of Justice website. It's going to be a bit older, you know, it's going to be after, you know, maybe one to two years after they filed their taxes. But we can utilize publicly available information. It would just be nice to also have contact information for school-based groups and their leaders. Otherwise, we will be relying on the school administrators to kind of help us to understand who who are the groups in their schools, because there is typically more than one, especially high schools or or larger schools.
So yes, Jackson, absolutely. We are allowed to do that. And we 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 should, as a public entity, know the 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 resources that are coming in to the organization. And I think Dr. Moore and others would would agree.
Yeah, and then the second part was just what happens if they don't submit their records? Or anything, I guess?
Yeah, well, and that that's what I was referring to, that we can look it up, that, you know, that we can, we can find the information. But we do we do need some more visibility, I would say. Maybe maybe the word oversight was poorly chosen, but we need some more visibility into the types of investments that are being made in schools when they impact the education of the students directly.
This is more of a philosophical question. So when originally FTE was allowed to be purchased, it was right after Measure Five and sort of pre-local options, pre Success Act, pre arts tax. If if there is a need, and let's just use the Bridle Mile example since that was highlighted, if there is a need for a resource in a school to address an equity issue, why wouldn't PPS, I mean, I mean, we have more, I I I know it written initially, everybody was scrambling, because we, there was a huge loss of revenue following Measure Measure Five. But I'm just curious, why, why why would a group of parents need to pay for something that's an equity investment? And if it's, if it's a million dollars, which, when we we know that doesn't quite get you at equity, but if that's going to be the differentiator, just, I mean, philosophically, I'm just curious why.
Well, I think you asked that same question at the last meeting, Julia, about the, I mean, the the equity piece, and I think the the response I heard Robin say last time, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there isn't enough money. Like, we know that we don't meet EQM, and that there are, there's always more that that we could do. And so I think it's it's this, how do we, yes, there are equity pieces that the district is funding and pouring a lot of money in, and there's, oh, there's more need than we can actually fund. And so this is a way to address that.
And I think, if I may, I think, you know, I also want to make sure that that we 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 position this, this, this 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 piece around funding of positions equally in the same with us, understanding there are other factors, right? School sites make decision, or school site leaders make decisions on staffing, right? They understand their community, so they understand what is needed. Sometimes, you know, and 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 so as a district, we have to understand the financial, you know, deployment of resources to schools based on a number of formulas and a number of of requirements from the state or the federal, and then understanding that we have a limited resources of money. How do, how do we, as a system, equitably distribute those to communities and school, school communities that 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 really you know, in the in the grand scale of things, look, need, need, need extra. in the grand scale of things, look, uh, need, need, need extra support, right? So I think, I think what's, what's hard about this conversation is that the, the, we're looking at the accordion both stretched and, 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 and not stretched, right? And I think it's important that we look at, like, equity, racial equity issues are a system issue, right? And, and so we're talking about it at the system. And then there are equity issues within, within school communities. And so really understanding how to unpack that is part of the conversation that I think we want to have collectively. So Julia, adding to your question, like philosophically, should T, uh, parents pay for FTE? I, I don't know. I mean, the, the same question, should, should parents pay for, for basketballs and, and, and footballs and, and, and paper? And, you know, I mean, that, that becomes that philosophical question that I think is important for all, all of us to, together to have as a community.
Great, and I look forward to it. Like I say, I'm, it, it's not an argument against anything, but I'm just trying to, like, wrap my arms around, like, hey, if we're gonna say, like, you, whatever the equity need is, say at Bridal Mile, it's like, the only way you're gonna get that is if parents decide to fundraise this year. And like, I'm just wondering, like, what's our backstop? It's like, are we, is, is that the right place for us to be? Because what if they do stop fundraising? Do we just say, too bad, Bridal Mile? You know, whatever your equity need is, because that got paid for by parents, you know, fundraising, and now they've decided not to do it for whatever reason.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think, I think part, part of the conversation, and I know Robyn's team has been working on this, but, you know, it's also making sure that we under, have an understanding of how these dollars are actually being used and what, you know, what, what FTEs are actually, you know, because I think there's, it's all teachers. I mean, as you look, there's a lot of EAs, and so how do we interpret that differently from, you know, core subjects? And, and so I think, I think it's having the, I think being able to have a nuanced conversation where it's not like, I, I think that's going to be important, right?
Yeah, and having been in schools, both that had foundations and then didn't, I mean, generally, I think why you get EAs and some of these other things is when they're trying to fundraise, they're looking at the thing that has the, you know, the broadest base of potential fundraising capacity. Like, if you're paying for the art teacher, that's gonna impact most kids. Or like the EAs that has the ability versus buying like a third grade teacher. So, I mean, I, I think when, and the experience I've had is, it is very much a, like a school community conversation. Like, do we, you know, we don't have music and we need another half a FTE for music, and is that what we want to prioritize versus like EAs in the classroom? And, and usually it's very much driven, not driven, but it's like framed up by the prin, the principal based on how they've allocated their resources at, at the front end.
So Julia, I, I just say, I wouldn't generalize your experience. I think there's lots of different experiences, and I think Robin alluded to that earlier, of who, who's making decisions about which money goes where, and who in the community and the school community is involved in those decisions. And we know there's been spending from outside sources that in some schools have exacerbated inequities. So I, I think there's a lot of different experiences out there. So I just want to say.
I completely agree.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to, and I totally support staffs getting the information. Like, that's, that's ground zero to get that from all sources. And it, it's always been curious to me that when I've worked on campaigns for, how long have we worked on campaigns, Julia? Twenty years, never been able to get a list of contacts for PTAs from the regional PTA. They've never been forthcoming with that information.
And I, I just wanted to mention too, the Bridal Mile example was, was also because we worked with the principal utilizing the racial equity and social justice lens. That was why it was focused on an instructional specialist that was targeting the students in his community based on data. And yes, he could go to the district and, and ask for those positions, but he's, he's probably gonna have to give up something else, because there's, there, it's not going to be, oh, you have that need, you can get it when it's a really small number of students compared to another school where it's 90% of the students who are not meeting that benchmark. I mean, you just have such a vast differences in outcomes. And so it may be, maybe this would be the right time to share the, the data, the heat map, and just kind of allude to those differences.
That would be great, Robin. Let's see that. And so I just want to remind everybody, today's kind of our discussion about a little bit of the differentiation between the fund governance, really, it's not governance, but the fund relationship policy and then the local school fundraising policy. And so our intention is that the next meeting, we'll be voting the fund governance relationship policy out of committee, and that the local school fundraising is going to be a bigger, longer conversation. So just to kind of ground us of where we are in this work. All right, Robin, talk us through the heat map, please.
And, and then Chair Lowry, I think we have community members, should they also be brought in at, at this time?
You ready for him? I'll send over.
Go ahead and bring the, those folks in. And again, I think that our community members are here mostly to address that local school fundraising piece, correct?
Yeah, so this data might be, yeah.
Okay, go ahead and walk us through the heat map here, Robin, please, as they join us.
Okay, so the way that this is, the data is presented here is, it's, it starts with the lowest percent of students qualified for free meals. So the first school has, has only 1%. And it, and, but that's for elementary schools. And then it's organized, you know, it's K5s, and then it will, it goes down to K8s, middle schools and high schools, are each grouped together. But you'll notice, over here in the middle section, I wanted to call your attention to, these are the foundation fund positions that were purchased, and they get darker blue with the more positions. And then there's a total number over on the right. So you can see just at a quick glance here that the schools with the lowest percent of students qualified for free meals are able to purchase the most FTE positions. And, but if you look, you know, at the majority of the, the number of positions, so these ones that have the most, which includes Bridal Mile as one of them, you know, 1.7 FTE is what they were able to, to fund. The, it's still, they're still relatively low numbers. We're talking, you know, less than to, up to two positions here. And then if you look at the dollars per student, this is the amount that the district gives them per student, and the, and this is the differentiated funding model. So the school with 1% is Forest Park here, so $6,935 per student is how much they get in their budget. And so the principal then needs to make some decisions, and there's usually like a, a low, a higher maximum students per class. And so some in, in the differentiated funding model, and so sometimes it would be like, there's going to be a really big kindergarten coming in this year, we need to raise for an EA.
Robin, Robin, aren't these numbers a little confusing? Because this is the actual cost for numbers, so we may have a school that spends more, like, I'm looking at Abernathy and Stevenson, and that may be because they have a more tenured staff, a staff with more seniority. Isn't that correct? And so this FTE is complicated, right?
The, the, oh, the foundation fund?
Dollars per, well, the dollars per student, is that just general fund, Title I, foundation and grants? It does not include FTE?
What includes the FTE?
That, that's what they have to budget for FTE with. So that's the, the number that the district gives them.
Well, don't we, no, I mean, isn't it that when we do, my understanding is that when we do FTE assignments, we, we don't tie the FTE to a dollar amount? So like, if you look at.
So Chair Lowry, if I, if I may, I, I just, I don't feel comfortable speaking to our, how we assign people. So I, and I don't have, we don't have anybody from HR here that can speak to that, so I'd rather.
I just want to be careful looking at these numbers, because when I was on the foundation and we saw stuff like this, my understanding was, so that principals weren't saying, we're gonna fire all of our tenured teachers, right? So if you look at Irvington, they're spending $8,500. That's grant and foundation money, but we also, like, does that include FTE? And we have to take those things into consideration when we look at seniority, and some teachers are paid more than others. And so the idea that we didn't want principals to, like, then want to get rid of their more senior teachers because new teachers are cheaper, is that what I'm asking?
I think that's, I think you're reading a lot into, I mean, I think that's a lot of information, I think that's.
Right, but what I'm asking, what I'm trying to ask is, the dollars per student column, does it include FTE salary? Does it include salary or not?
So the, the way that the principals.
Orange is.
The principals get FTE, so this is not about salaries, this is how much they get from general fund, and then they figure out the backend of the salaries.
How much they get from general fund and then, and salaries are separate? Okay.
Yeah, there, it's just like an average that they use for FTE.
Wait, wait a minute.
Can I speak up for a minute?
Yeah, this has to include salaries.
Claire, let's have Claire speak to this, because I think it can be confusing if we're not really sure what we're talking about. Claire?
So I just want to share first, if you look at where it says dollars per student, towards the center at the top, it says school general fund, Title I, foundation, grants, excluding special ed, ESL and nutrition services. So in other words, it's more than general fund, and it is specific expense to the school, not centralized departments like special ed and ESL. That's why they're separated out. But it is the dollars per student in that school, and it does include salary.
Right, so, so my point is that when we're comparing two schools, it's not necessarily that that school gets more, the, the reason that that school gets more money might because of grants or foundations, but it could also because they have a more tenured staff, or a staff with more master's degree, or whatever it is that puts teachers up on the salary scale, correct?
Or, or they could be a smaller school that has every, you know, a smaller school still needs to have the custodian, the principal, the secretary, the PE teacher, the music teacher, you know? So as you get to a larger school, the dollars per student costs go down because you don't necessarily replicate all that baseline staff. You don't repeat, it's not allocated by the number of students, it's, the size of school has also an impact on that, right? Classroom teachers are absolutely allocated by the number of students in the school. But when you have staff that are school-based rather than classroom-based, then there are economies of scale as schools get larger.
And I, I know about this, because there was one point where, like, you know, Dunaway was getting a bunch more than Llewellyn, and we were all mad. And then once we understood that this was, this had a lot of factors to get to this number per student, that that then, it makes it a more complex conversation. So this is really helpful, Robin. Was there anything else from this that you wanted to highlight for us to think about as we think about local school fundraising or about the fund governance relationship at this time?
No, I, I think we're almost out of time if we wanted to take questions from our community members or statements.
Yeah, let's, let's turn to our community members now, welcome. And I can't see who all's here. Thank you. I think, is it Megan and Cara that are sharing today? All right, Megan, who's gonna go first, Megan or Cara?
I'll go first.
All right, thank you.
So I guess the question that we'd like you all to consider is, does, because we haven't heard, heard this, but does, does anyone think that the district should really be relying on parent fundraising for staffing our schools?
Well, that's the question Director Brimwood just asked, and, and we said that's a conversation we're gonna continue having.
I mean.
I think that, that the same should be applied to, that, I think that's what we as staff are, we're recommending the community answer is, should we rely on families, parents, to fundraise for anything, not just FTE?
And, and I guess I, I am, I welcome the opportunity for the community engagement phase. I think that's very important, because our group has never asserted that we, that we've done that work, although we have engaged with quite a few people from across the district. And the letter that we submitted to the, to the board last month, you know, represented 32 schools, 20, 24 of which are schools that receive grants from the, the parent fund. And I think when we go forward, I just would encourage that we, I, I'm interested to hear more about how this is going to be framed when we, when, when it goes out for community engagement, because I'm concerned about just putting out the idea that, oh, we can adjust the, adjust the formula by 7% and have that as the starting place. I think we'd like, we'd like the staff and the board to be bold and help and listen to the community and imagine a new approach to how we're, how we're funding our staff. Because we, our, our group feels that, that, that public education is really a human, a human right and not something that should be treated as an individual consumer good.
Megan, did you have some thoughts you wanted to share?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to echo what Cara said and, and, and also what Julia asked is, is that the question has been asked, asked, what's the defense for allowing private fundraising to fund public positions? And no one's actually answered the question. And part of what happened in the last meeting is that we were basically told that you guys are the experts in this, and so we should rely on your expertise, but your answer to that question is, well, what does the community say? So that seems contradictory. I don't understand that.
Well, if I, sure, I think it isn't, I don't believe it is contradictory. I, I believe when I, and, and I, as I've shared with you and your group, when I think about community engagement, and then I just made this point earlier, there are more voices than what's at the table. And so I think it's important to understand the diverse voices that need to be heard.
I guess, I guess what we are asking is, what is your perspective?
Sure, I have a perspective, and I am happy to give that perspective to you. But I think if I share my perspective, well, actually, my perspective is that, which is, yes, the district encourages currently that the district pay, that, that, that the local school foundations should pay for, can pay for FTEs.
And how does that align with the RESG, RESJ lens?
Sure, I think, I think racial equity isn't just a, a single act, a single decision. I think it is not a, it's not a, it's not a key that you just turn, right? Racial equity isn't just an answer. There isn't just one equity answer, there isn't just one racial equity response. So when people say racial, what's the racial equity lens? There are multiple dimensions to, to getting to a racial equity lens, and, and I think having a singular approach is a, is, is very polarizing, and I think it creates a yes or no, black or white. And as we know, racial equity isn't black or white, but it's more nuanced. And so I think my response to your question about how does that fit? There are multiple ways that it fits. I have folks who work in foundations that are, that are working to disrupt the ways and found, and the way in which white supremacy impacts foundations at the national level. So is there a way for us to unpack the way in which we can, we can live into racial equity and social justice? Racial equity and social justice isn't about going from zero to 100 or 100 to zero. It is about understanding the, the grayness, the, the complexity of it all. Racial equity is about understanding complexity and being in that complexity. And it's. And it's not a simple yes or no, eliminate or, or get rid of. I think that's too simplistic.
Of course, I totally agree with you. I guess, you know, the, the question is.
Move on. We, we kind of have exhausted our time and I know that this is a conversation, Megan, that we're going to continue to have. But I also agree with Jonathan that I am in support of parents being able to fundraise to support their schools, whether that's FTE or laptops or headphones. But I do think we have some really big conversations in PPS about local school fundraising and how we make that equitable. And I know we're going to continue to have that conversation. I'm going to go ahead and turn us back over to Director Moore. Okay, I see that. Oscar, can you be really brief so we can move forward?
Well, I just, I guess one of my questions is just, what's the concern about? Why can't we just have it where only the foundation, the parent foundation, the district fund gives, you know, pays for FTE? Why do we have, I feel like it's easy just for us to say only the parent fund gave FTE, pay for FTE.
Yeah, so the, the one, so right now, the way it works is, well, I think that's a conversation for you and Jonathan to have about what the potential. I think we just, it's not just about local school foundations. We need to talk about how equity is part of all of local school-based fundraising. That there are equity issues, not just in the foundation. And if that's all we focus about, focus on, then we're not actually doing the work of the RESJ work we're called to. So I'm going to turn it back over to Director Moore because I know we have much more on the agenda. Again, this is not the end of this conversation. This will come back up next meeting and we will continue to work on the school-based fundraising conversation as we go forward. Director Moore.
Thank you. So it's now six thirty-nine and we did have one other policy on today's agenda. Liability of employees of the district. And this is sort of in, we only have a few minutes, you know, up to ten minutes to talk about this. But this is kind of introducing the idea for a new policy potentially. So I think Liz, we're going to be talking through this. Okay, thanks.
Conceptually, this, the, the problem this is trying to solve is sometimes the weaponizing of administrative complaints, particularly against lawyers at PPS, but frankly, in other, other public entities. When we consulted with some outside legal experts on this, this is not unique to PPS. But you can go back over multiple, multiple years and find when parents are frustrated with a decision that an attorney may be involved with at, at the district, that sometimes that results in bar complaints principally. There may be some other avenues, but that's the, that's the main path. And that that puts a somewhat unique burden on, on lawyers. So that's where we, that's where we started looking at this issue and how we were trying to solve it was trying to figure out how to best support that. The Torque Claims Act, just as a broad measure, protects public employees from liability for, for law. Most lawsuits, as long as they're acting in the course and scope of their employment. But these kinds of administrative proceedings are not covered by the Torque Claims Act. So we consulted with, like I said, actually multiple law firms who have, who can, who represent public entities and frankly, used. This draft language came from an outside lawyer who used to be general counsel at UVO, where they also faced this issue. So there are, these types of policies can be very narrow. They can be broader. We are, we, we are introducing the topic here. I do think, and I am not a district employee. I'm not a beneficiary of this policy, but, or proposed policy, but I want to, I do think it is. It's a very hard part about keeping and retaining good legal talent when these kinds of weaponized attacks are made. And they are, and they are, we are not talking about when someone engages in misconduct and is sanctioned and all of those things. We, we are talking about when it is weaponized against individual lawyer who's just doing their job. So that's the tee up for the, the problem statement. And how, how we got to this draft language that's before you.
I really appreciate this language being brought forward. I guess I want to know, like, what would be considered best practices and how? I would think if we were going to do this, we'd want to make sure that there's just a lot of transparency. So it's. Just, I think transparency always ends speculation or people wondering like, why did somebody get a lawyer and who's paying for it? So I don't know if that.
And we, we've drafted this for the class of employees beyond lawyers that are nonrepresented by labor unions. I should say that I started at the problem statement, but the, the scope of the policy is a little broader than that. But I agree, this is about making it very transparent. And I, I think a single best practice is perhaps, I'm not sure that's a very specifically defined line. I do think, I do think it is best practice for organizations to not have individual employees exposed to significant professional and financial risk when they are engaged in just doing their job that they have to individually bear. And I think it should be transparent to the public and to the employees about when and how those protections are in place. So there should be, it should not be a secret. And you, you could do, you could create a policy that requires every individual instance to come before the board, right? That would be another way to do that. The board would be transparent. It would, but it would be, you'd have to engage in it every single time. And it just doesn't happen every week or every month. But it, it is a practice over time. And frankly, you know, I became aware of it when I came to PPS. Because there were two pending complaints against two different PPS lawyers at that time, both of which, you know, the complaints filed were dismissed promptly, but it's not without cost to defend. And it's very high profile and high risk. I don't know, high, high risk. It's high financial exposure and it feels very high risk to a lawyer going through it because if something happens in that bar license proceeding, if they don't retain counsel to defend them in a technical administrative proceeding with, you know, its own specialized rules. It, it has very high stakes with the career for that lawyer. But again, we've, we crafted the policy a little beyond that. So I'm, that's a little longer wordier answer than I would like to give when it's not six forty, six PM. I'm sorry, Julia.
This is not a new policy. This is.
It's an amendment of an existing policy.
I, I was worried there. I think we do need more policies. That's, we really have a shortage of policies in this district.
Share your concerns, Scott.
And the other thing, I just want to make it clear that I disagree with Dick the Butcher. We should not kill all the lawyers.
Okay.
Shakespeare, you know, come on, somebody's.
Yes, I.
Nobody?
I, I know the reference and I appreciate that you disagree with it.
I used to have a T-shirt that said that, by the way.
And there, and there you go, diversity on the board.
Yes. So I guess it's important to note that this is written in such a way that it does not give a free pass for malfeasance or any improper behavior. I think that's worth saying out loud.
It's very important. You, you should not, the district, if you have a misbehaving lawyer who's violating the rules of professional conduct, that should, that is an individual responsibility of the attorney for that misbehavior. Yep.
Right. So I guess my question is, you and I have talked sort of fitfully over the last couple of years or however long it's been since pre-COVID. So the before times we started talking about this. And the question was, it's pretty clear that this is a potential risk to attorneys. And, and we have actual examples where this kind of policy actually could have been helpful. My question was, what about district employees other than attorneys? Who might be subject to not a bar investigation, but other investigations? That could also incur some potentially significant financial burden?
So we have a lot of licensed professionals in this district. You can think about many, many categories of employees who are required to be licensed by the state to do their job. We, when represented by a labor union, there comes some additional layers of representation that are available, which is why we drafted this language to apply to all nonrepresented employees. With represented employees relying on their unions for that representation when there are allegations that arise out of their workplace conduct.
But just a question about that, like if there was something with say TSPC. I'm just thinking of the instances where I've seen with a representative employee, them actually having their own attorney. And I'm assuming they're paying their own attorney because their union is not paying, paying for it.
I, I am, I don't know that I can speak with precision about all of those relationships and sometimes those are intertwined. TSBC is a challenging one because we have an affirmative obligation to report allegations to TSBC. And so there's, I, I want to acknowledge that that is, I think, it has some unique attributes in terms of the district being the reporter and then not funding the defense of that. And I actually can't, I can't speak to where the union and where all of the other potential areas of support might exist. But the PPS, but school districts have a legal obligation to report certain allegations to S, to TSBC, again, six fifty, to be investigated. So I think it's, I think it's got some unique attributes.
So on that note, so for example, if the district reported something to CSBC about a licensed but unrepresented employee, they could potentially ask that the district's under this.
I think when we were talking in, in broad concepts, we were thinking about represented, folks who are represented by unions who are regulated by TSBC. And I think your question is a good one. There's a small band of folks who are regulated by TSBC who are not represented. And I think we should have to look at that. I'm not sure if we're the reporting body. I think, yeah, I think it's an important call out. It's going to kind of this concept here to flow, figure out, this is the, this is, here's the problem statement and then how do we sort that out? Yeah.
Yeah, which seems like a, there's probably some language that can just be added.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
But I won't be added because I just have the time and I've got to, sorry. I'm supportive of moving, moving conceptually this along with figuring out the nuances.
Thanks, Julia.
Same, same here. This is a good thing to address. And again, it's, it's clear the district has the choice of whether to, you know, first decide, was the employee acting in good faith? And therefore shall we support them and help them in their defense? But it no way obligates the district to defend everybody and anybody who is accused.
So we'll go back and think about that nonrepresented TSBC language. We'll continue, we'll, if it's okay with you, Rita, we'll bring back. You know, two dot O at the next policy committee meeting and we'll circulate that and we'll give it some more thought. And if you, as you all think about it over the next few weeks, I'm happy to engage. Again, we're trying to find the right. We're trying to solve the problem and not build, you know, a big unwieldy machine at the same time. So.
Right. And I think, I mean, realistically, this, this iteration of the policy committee has, you know, one meeting left. And I think that this policy, I think, could present some particularly complicated questions. So I suspect it's highly unlikely that we would get to, that we would finish this policy at the next committee meeting.
Completely agree.
Okay, but I think it's worth at least starting this discussion to tee up the next iteration of the policy committee to kind of pick up where we left off.
Yes, I think all the brain power on this one so that we are, we don't have unintended consequences, I think is what we're really focused on here.
The, the brain power is about to leave this committee, so.
So we need all you got right now.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for, for Ailey to, for the dime to drop for Ailey.
That was certainly in my head, but I chose not to say it out loud.
Resigned to my fate, yes.
Okay. All right. So I think we'll leave it there and you'll come back to us next time. And I anticipate that it won't be a, a massively long discussion next time either. But it will be good to have another chance to sort of chew over things. And if people can think about it in the meantime, that would be good.
I think stress testing, you know, how it applies is really helpful. So we welcome that conversation, but thank you.
Okay. So at six fifty-five, we have, I believe, one person signed up for public comment?
Yes.
So can we invite that person in?
Yes. They're on their way. We have Tyler Brown.
Tyler, are you, are you in? There you go.
Thank you for your time. My name is Tyler Brown. I represent, well, I work for SEI through Jefferson, but I'm also PTA. Vice President for Martin Luther King Junior School, but also formerly went to Martin Luther King Junior School. So thank you for your time. I'm not going to take up all this two minutes. Seems like the meeting has gone long enough. I just want to leave you with a few words. As somebody who's worked with secondary education for the last seven years, I, I see firsthand how important the teachers are and how important the teachers are to the students. And I just hope that coming up that this FTE fund is what you guys are calling it, or what it's called, will change and support the teachers that need the money or that do the work. I know a lot of teachers in the district that still have to have secondary incomes in order to support their families over this past COVID year. I think we've all seen firsthand of what, how important teachers are. I have two kids myself and I miss the teachers dearly. I enjoy going to see them at the school as a vaccinated person. And I hope that coming out of COVID, going to this new PPS that we truly appreciate and value the tremendous job that a lot of these teachers are doing and trying to put forth. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of your very hot evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to speak to us.
You're welcome.
Okay. And, and I think we can all endorse the, yes, teachers deserve a million dollars, especially after this year. Okay, so we're at six fifty-seven. We've got three minutes left. Any lingering burning issues? Okay.
I wanted to just, I just wanted to take a moment. I sent Oscar an email, kind of answering his question, at least my thoughts, that he asked about, why don't we just shut down all the foundations and do it all through the fund? And my, one of the thoughts we've had is that right now, there's about $4 million in equity funds that comes through, through those foundation equity dollars. And that if we were to just shut down all the local foundations, it's very possible that all that money will go to PTAs. And then that money, there would be no equity fund. So that's part, we need to have a bigger conversation about all fundraising before we just shut down foundations.
I think, I think I should clarify my question. I was thinking about specifically having that be, like, having, not having LSS pay for FTE, but they can pay for other things. So kind of my statement was have the fund pay for FTE, and then local LSS can pay for other things.
Right. But then we still end up with inequities, like, for example, you know, if the Dunaway community or Llewellyn community where I was at raised $100,000 to the PTA, that meant we were able to pay for field trips and computers, lunches for teachers, and my friend who was the PTA president at Woodlawn, they raised $4,000. So they weren't able to give supply stipends to teachers. They weren't able to pay for computers. So one of the things that might happen is if we just say, okay, no more local school foundations, then all the 5Ks and the auctions, the money that's raised there will all just go to PTA. And instead of buying FTE, it'll go for all those enrichment pieces. And then there will be nothing going to equity funds, because PTA doesn't do equity funds. So we really need to think about this globally as all of fundraising, not just, let's shut down the foundations and solve the FTE problem of inequity. It creates this whole other layer of inequable programming.
Yeah, last week I did some school tours. Just let me finish with Gary Holland, the incoming board member. And we went from a high-income school to a middle-income school. And he said, whoa, look at the difference in technology in the classroom. And there you go. So I just want to agree with Ailey that this is a, we got to look at the whole system if we're going to address inequities.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to stop us here. We will be returning to the whole foundation question at the next meeting. And no doubt at future meetings as well. For the next meeting, if people can take a look at the foundation, the Fund for PPS policy, the foundation policy, most of the changes there are, I think, relatively technical. And if we can, it would be good if we could work through that policy at the next committee meeting and with an eye toward voting it out, if possible, for a first reading. So that, to avoid a sort of long hiatus before the next iteration of the policy committee can deal with it. Okay. What?
Public engagement?
This is a purely governance issue with the foundation. And I, I mean, we can talk about it at the next meeting. But I think we're talking about ensuring that the Fund for PPS is in compliance with all statutory requirements and with national best practices on these kinds of district foundations. Okay, so I'm going to stop us here. Thank you, everybody, for all your attention. Good work, and we will see you in three weeks.